All right.
Oh, gosh.
It's like having pork, she says.
Just to wait.
I probably lead this to the flag. These are the wrong way. Who is saying? Under God, in the resolve, liberty and justice for all. Justice to the agenda. So we're going to let you guys go forward.
So the so the adjustments to the agenda is we would like to offer for Mr. Leather's class to do the presentation earlier instead of later, if you'd like to do that. Okay. The next. The next adjustment to the agenda would be to see if the board would create a six nine alternative ed program. So that's later in our agenda. And also the idea of the board would approve the superintendent's nomination of and authorize the superintendent to hire an alternative ed teacher of that as well as later in the agenda.
All right, you guys.
You guys are being recalled and.
Wait. There we go. There you have.
Hi, where is this eighth grade of home room? And since it's around, so we've been working on a very important project. We have been working with data major to capture this. We make this project called private citizen. Private citizen allows students to identify a problem in the community, brainstorm solutions and create a public policy to present the appropriate level of government.
The problem that we chose to investigate was how to improve the student satisfaction with the food served in the cafeteria. On giving out a survey for my school, we found out over three quarters of the eighty students that participated believe that the lunches would be changed a little better. Based with these results, we came up with three ideas to improve the overall satisfaction of students. Our first idea was to look into different food vendors to increase the variety of meals we received at lunch. However, we found out that finding different food vendors available from Illinois, it wasn't going to be possible. Our second idea was to create a student nutrition group. The student nutrition group would be able to accurately provide the cafeteria with feedback on a regular basis concerning the food that is served. Something like this started to come with the help of Mrs. Sharet, who has milked us and allowed us to advise her about ideas for the lunch to serve in the cafeteria. I lost my place. Hold on. She has been openly, uh, oops, she's been open to and actively collaborating with us. Our final idea was to attempt to sponsor a greenhouse or school garden, ensuring that even fresher food reaches the cafeteria.
Our class had unanimously chosen to start a school greenhouse. We found out that school funding for buying local foods have been cut at a federal level, which makes our idea of installing a greenhouse or two even more beneficial to school. Miss Sharet has met with Flex Farm. The company will be ideally buying two grow towers from to find out some key information. Each grow tower is around five thousand dollars. However, two grow towers will grow fifty pounds of food a month. It's worth the investment, not only because it is healthier for the students to consume, but it's a great way to teach botany when they're included curriculum.
Moving forward, there's a plethora of option actions we've decided to take to create a more positive atmosphere of the student body. We've already received support from students, staff, parents, and the cafeteria manager. The student nutrition group is being formed and should officially be up and running smoothly in the fall. Funding is one of the final and probably the largest steps to take. While we ask a big favor, this would really help improve the school in the long run. We ask you, this is the board, the school administration, to help us find grants or donations to fund our project. Thank you for your time. Your contribution is much appreciated.
Were there any questions about the project?
Would you mind explaining just a little bit about each of your posters? Just because like from sitting back here, we can't entirely tell what they're about.
This one just explains the problem. So I don't give you no money. Any results?
It needs to happen, right?
It should come with nasty examples of like food that we've gotten in the past, not that we want to take our phones out and just show a bunch of people nasty food. But it's just to like explain that we'd like to better that food, so it's more edible.
They're just examples of what we're talking about when we're saying that we would like school food to change. They're they're not like, we don't want you to focus on them necessarily. They're not, they're not like the entire project.
Okay.
What's this one about again? Why don't you guys talk about what happened after you you met with Mrs. Sharet for the first time? You talked about some of the things that your complaints, some of which were reasonable and some that were, you realized were maybe a little more than what we could do here.
December, and then we like made our plan of action, our problem, all our policies and everything, ways that we could solve this issue. And then we basically ruled out the two other issues and picked the best one with the other ones being backups. And Miss Sharet met with us about two weeks after we figured all of this stuff out for the first time. And we, that's when we created a survey box for our school where we emailed it to all of the homeroom teachers and they had their kids take it. And then we explained to her some of the major problems, like finding hair in your food or having food that just was not like edible to your liking, not very tasty. Ways to better the food. And we kind of discussed that. And we also came up with a menu, which is on one of these boards, which is just like an example of like a month. And we followed all of like the rules and standings where you had to have like a certain amount of greens, certain amount of meat, certain amount of wheat, all of that stuff, just to kind of get a rough draft on the road of where we want to go. And the
I think I just think it's an excellent idea. You guys solved that problem. We offered some solutions. I think a couple of greenhouses would be a great idea, especially with the federal budget. They are they are cutting back on funding for food. I think that leaves the fantastic idea.
With the green houses, that could also add like another elective option at our school. They're like.
Yes. You're tied by the rules of sciences.
Yeah, but I think it'd be an interesting process here.
And it has its own curriculum. You can buy the greenhouses and it comes with curriculum.
I think it's a fantastic idea, especially if we can get some grants to help fund it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It's nice to see young people when I take that mission.
Public comment. All right. The school board endorses the concept that community participation and affairs of the school schools is essential to improve the quality of education for its students. To be eligible to address the board, an individual should reside within the school unit, be an employee of the school unit, or be invited to by the board or superintendent to speak. The board shall give due attention to comments and contributions from the audience, but shall not be expected to respond or take action immediately. Audience inquiries, other than simple questions, shall be referred to the superintendent or who shall investigate or consider the matter in support to the citizens and to the board. If the board action is indicated, the item may be included in the agenda for the subsequent meeting. Comments will be heard for no longer than three minutes per person. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Approval of minutes, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the school board meeting from May sixth, twenty twenty five, barring any errors or admissions.
Any discussion? Hall of favor?
You have to do it.
So I have to do each one normally?
No, we just have to do it in which we did.
Thank you, Kevin. The hall of favor is. Hey, motion to direct superintendent.
I'd like to make a motion, direct superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party here enlisted here listed herein. The sum set against each name continued in the following school payroll warrants. May twenty second, twenty twenty five, PR twenty five dash twenty four, one hundred and fifty seven thousand fifty one dollars and forty three cents. PR twenty five dash twenty four D, eighty one thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy five cents. Maine Pers twenty five dash twenty nine, two hundred and sixty two dollars and ninety cents. Maine Pers twenty five dash thirty, eight thousand four hundred and eighty one dollars and seventy one, three cents. Maine Pers twenty five dash thirty one, thirty four thousand seven hundred and seventy six dollars and thirty six cents. June fifth, twenty twenty five, PR twenty five dash twenty five, one hundred and thirty six thousand eight hundred and fifty eight dollars and twenty cents. PR twenty five dash twenty five D, seventy five thousand four hundred and twenty twenty three dollars and thirty eight cents.
Any discussion? Hall of favor?
Aye.
Favor warrants.
I'd make a motion, director superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed herein. The sum set against each name contained in the following school payable warrants. May twenty second, twenty twenty five, AP twenty five dash thirty five, twenty three thousand seven hundred and sixty seven dollars and seventeen cents. AP twenty five dash thirty six, one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty five dollars and twenty five cents. SA twenty five dash thirty, three thousand one hundred and sixty seven dollars and fifty four cents. June fifth, twenty twenty five, AP twenty five dash thirty seven, sixty eight thousand six hundred and three dollars and three cents. SA twenty five dash thirty one, four thousand forty two dollars and twenty two cents. SA twenty five dash thirty two, nine thousand eight hundred and eighty eight dollars and sixty three cents. SA twenty five dash thirty three, one thousand four hundred and eighty eight dollars and fifty two cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Kevin?
Aye.
So Chelsea has joined us today to give you an update on some of the activities with the extended learning opportunities grant that we're participating in. She's been working on it now for a couple of months, about three months. So she just has some details to share with us.
Yes, I just want to come in today to give you updates on what we're doing with the program and just some ongoing things that you can be expecting to see summer and fall. So just a reminder, yellow program is opportunities for students, mostly juniors and seniors, but it can apply to all high school students to earn academic credit through experiences outside of the classroom. A lot of these experiences are going to be relying on community based experiences. So they'll be partnering with a mentor or business. The ELO program is also offering career exploration services, which middle school students can tap into as well. But these are not going to be credit bearing experiences. An example of one of these previously was a field trip that I took students on to University of Maine. It was an engineering day and this was open to high school students. That was like more of a career exploration and not an ELO specifically. So right now I have kind of the program vision worked out. I've got a big thick packet for work based learning experiences that students will be doing. This will be for students who are earning credits. All juniors and seniors and teachers have learned about the program. So there was some bit of marketing that has been done. Uh, some community members have been connected with so far. I do have a student that's starting an internship at the library this summer, so we'll have an yellow story done. One thing about this program is that it's extremely individualized. So each student is going to have a different experience with the program. So once we start getting the stories and hearing about their experiences, it'll be a little bit easier to relate to and words will get out a little bit more. So hoping that that student will have a good experience with summer. She'll earn half a credit once she finishes that. So these are elective credits that students can earn. And then I've got at least four lined up for the fall. So four more students that will start. Hopefully I can work a little bit more with teachers on middle school goals and what we can do with those students. So so far these are all going to be seniors completing the ELOs for the next school year. Another exciting program that I wanted to share with as many people as possible is a program called Manpower, which I have been signing a couple of students up with and I've let community partners know, which is, it's a program that any business in Maine can sign up with as long as they've got a sixteen to twenty four year old person that wants to work with them, that'll pay seventy five hours at minimum wage. So the library internship that our student is doing, she's doing it through this program. So I've opened up that position and that opportunity to her. So if there are any other businesses or community partners that are interested in mentoring a student, that they don't have the funds to hire them, that's something that we can use to get that student in with with the mentor or the community partner. And it's pretty flexible around what the workplace is. It could be something in the school. It could be a mentor outside of the school. So just chatting with me about the possibilities is what I encourage everybody to just come talk to me and I can see what he can do with the program. So I had a little handout here. There have already been some changes that have been made. It's an ever evolving program. So I've got kids that I talk to all the time. That's what most of my day looks like now is meeting the students and getting to know them. But I'm really excited about this program. I'm hoping that it'll help some of the students think about their learning a little bit differently, get more excited about coming to school and definitely learn something about themselves and what careers they're interested in and maybe potentially change the trajectory of what they end up doing. So that's my thing. If anybody has any questions. It's been a lot of work that's been removed and so.
How will this, will this interact with region three?
I've had a lot of interactions with region three. So some students are going to stay in region and still do ELOs. I'm I'm working on hopefully partnering with region to kind of combine our efforts. Because there is, there are, I have a student right now who is in region. She's going to be in it next year and she wants to connect with the hospital in Lincoln. So it's kind of like we can do this little triangle thing. So yeah, so it's a mix of thing. And then I have one student who is kind of beyond what region can offer. So he's coming to the yellow program to try to to work through, because he's he's doing firefight finding yellow. But he's he's more mass than what they offer patients. So it's a good way to work with them and also an alternative program.
Thank you very much.
Tony.
Yes.
Don, I just wanted to add that we can help us where I work, E M D C, with work experiences as well. We've had him at the library, Chelsea's at the library now. So that's such a, we can help with with a lot more hours. So if you have people that are, who are eligible for our program, we may be able to help to extend it longer.
Nice. Okay. That's good enough.
Thank you, Kevin. That's the agenda. See if the board will approve the superintendent's nomination.
Make a motion to approve the superintendent's nomination of and authorize the superintendent to hire Alyssa Avril as high school history teacher, step eight of the masters, fifty two thousand six hundred and seventy one dollars.
Second bet. Any discussion?
There was an interview team that I've interviewed Alyssa and she was a strong candidate and interested in returning to this area. I'm not sure who's most excited about this, but I'm thinking it's her dad. So we welcome her. We're pleased to put forth her nomination.
Okay, have a vote, Kevin.
Aye.
See if the board will create a six to nine alternative education program. That's a motion.
Motion to create a six to nine alternative ed program.
I'll second that.
So this is exciting. This is one thing that we might have shared services conversations that we started through in October. And this program is going to be developed with the Medway Middle School. So it'll be Medway and Sterns. And we have interviewed and we still have a lot of work to do, but we've interviewed and we're going to put forth a nomination tonight after creating a program to hire a teacher, it will be staff with a teacher and an ed tech. The the pay will be like a one third, two thirds, based on our attendance, really our enrollment. So Medway will pay one third of our program cost. We'll pay two thirds of our program cost. This was already calculated when we built the budget in anticipation of being able to put the details together. We've got to do simple things, I guess, like name the program. Because this is not special ed. It's not regular ed. It's for kiddos who just need to some, a learning environment that's a little bit different than what they're currently in. If you're in this program, you may be, I may not do very well in science class, for instance. And I just, I don't, I don't like what's going on. I don't understand it. So I get my dander up and I maybe say things and do things that are disruptive. But maybe I'm good in ELA, ELA, EL English Language Arts. I'm thinking ELO. I can't get over that. English Language Arts. Or maybe I'm pretty good in math. So maybe science is my only issue. So we would perhaps have some conversations with the student and the parents and say, well, how about for this class, we try this? So the science would look different. It wouldn't be perhaps looking at a lab. It might not be going through the chapters of a book. It might be looking at what the concept is because the learning opportunity is still going to be there. It's just going to be approached in a different manner. So when we say alternative, we really do mean alternative. So a student may be in this room half of the day, all of the day, or a class period. But it will be the same, like every day it's like you'll be assigned to this program or not. So it won't be like Shelley can't go into a class and, you know, misbehave and all of a sudden I've been sent there. No. The, this will be a group of students who we believe through conversations with their parents and with the teachers and with the students will be better served in an alternative type setting. So the learning opportunities will just look a little bit different. We are excited because we're putting this program in place for grades six through nine. We're sharing with Medway and we think that combination is really good. We think it'll really benefit kiddos. It's not going to be a great big class because with learning being so different, we can't have a class of twenty, so we're looking at about eleven as our cap. But we'll, I'll tell you lots more as we develop more details around the program. But it is exciting. It's an exciting venture for a couple of reasons. One, because we'll share it with Medway. And two, because we'll be serving some students who really just need education a little bit different way.
Kevin Gregory, can I have your vote?
I had a question too, Tony. Is is it, is it already in our budget for this upcoming budget?
Yes.
Okay. My second question, where would it be housed at this? Is it going to be two different places or?
No, it's going to be here. And.
Okay.
Yep.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
Just real, just real quick. I just see this as a great opportunity to share services with a neighboring school. And we should do that for benefit to students and possibly even save money sometimes. I think I think it's a great idea. And I wonder if somehow that keeps the science, I could spring wood off that nice presentation that the young students made, like nutrition, science, greenhouses. Looks like that could be a
Yeah.
Something I might spring into it.
Those are definitely things that we're hoping will come out of this program. When I was at Kattadon last time and I was principal there, we put into place a program like this. And we had kids learn how to lay flooring. And if you don't think there's math and science in that, right? So like, we're trying to kind of like build off ideas of things that we, you know, have already experienced as being successful. So, yeah.
Have Kevin vote you? And yes. Okay, see if the board will approve the superintendent's nomination of obviously authorize the superintendent to hire an alternative education teacher.
To prove, I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's nomination of and authorize the superintendent to hire Roger Bemello as an alternative education teacher at step zero with a bachelor's, forty six thousand three oh five.
Second.
So there was an interview committee who interviewed Roger. Roger got his degree in December and has really feels a a drive and does a really wonderful job with some of the kids that need this type of programming. So it seems like an amazing fit. He interviewed well. He and I spoke yesterday and we ran through scenarios, you know, like what would you do with this and what would you do with that? And it wasn't part of the interview process, but it was part of, okay, let's make sure we're thinking this through. This is the the kind of programming that you're looking for. The details aren't set up. So if you're somebody who needs the details between, you know, now and the first of August, this isn't the program for you because we really want somebody who's helping to develop the program, bring the ideas in. So I'm really excited to put forth Roger for the teacher for this program.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if I have to recuse myself or not. Shelley, he was a customer, but he's exited. So I'm in support of it either way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? So if he does, he's not going to vote on or is he going to abstain? Kevin, are you going to vote on this or abstain?
I was trying to get the mute off, sorry. If you feel like you vote on it, it's not a conflict, I'll vote yes.
I think it's fine. He hasn't been in your program for a while.
Okay.
Sorry, Rick.
All right, see if the board will approve the roofing bid.
Make a motion to include the roofing bid of AM Construction and Roofing, Inc., Caribou Main at one hundred and ten thousand five hundred and fifty eight dollars and sixty two cents.
Second, discussion?
About three weeks ago, we had seven bids that were put in for this project. And the project is done, right? And so like within a few days of accepting this bid, which the key factors with accepting this, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Louis, was that they, for one, were a local company. They're from here in Maine, local as in here in Maine. They're from Caribou. But there wasn't anything that was much closer and there were people as far away as Massachusetts that didn't even come look at the site. This company actually came and spent an hour and a half walking up and in around the rafters, spending time talking with Louie, took pictures, really gave a thorough. um really gave a thorough assessment before he put in his his bid. Um, anything you want to add to that, that's pretty much the process. Yep, and then um shortly after that, um it the it was executed, and he had already taken measurements, knew the things he wanted, and we had materials delivered within a week, and they started a week ago, Monday? Uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then not.
And then Monday.
And then Monday, yeah, and it's, are they done?
They're done, all the roofing there, they've got some trim pieces to do that were included as well, but yeah, they're supposed to be back tomorrow to finish those. So as of tomorrow, it'll be completely done.
So for the Buildings and Grounds Committee, um we all saw those pictures, you were on it at that time. We all saw those pictures of the underpinning that was uh wet and weak, and when they got into it, they actually found that there was more than what we could see. Um, and this uh company had given us a price for anything that was discovered, that was not something you could see. Once you take off the shingles, there's an underlayment, once they take off the underlayment, there was more um like saturated um wood. And so there was a a price included in fixing all of that, and they did it, and they they really, we're we're thrilled, right? Yeah, we're thrilled.
A hundred and, he said today, a hundred and fourteen sheets had to be replaced.
Wow.
Of of roofing underlayment, yeah, hundred and fourteen were brought in.
So our ask at this time is that you would accept this um company's bid and.
Uh, did they have to look at the Grand Street School and what it was? They have not yet, no. I asked them if they'll look at it there. They will, okay, excellent. Can you relax? All right.
Yeah, one thing, Donnie, did, so was a hundred and ten, did they stay within that, I know those extra costs? But does this cover what they did?
Uh, no, because there was, this was for everything that was specked out for the work, but then there was a additional amount set for each piece of plywood or or other other things as they were discovered, once they were able to dig into it. Um, so we don't have the actual final um dollar figure yet, but you should know that compared to when we set the money aside, um I a year ago, a year and a half ago even, um we actually had more money than this, so we're still coming in under what we had set at that time. In this, in this case, waiting to do construction actually saved us money. So before, I know that a vote is next, but I was looking, is there anything, Louis, that you want to add to that for details or?
Well, that pretty much covers it, I think. I did walk all through the roof when we got the pouring rain this weekend, because I had nothing else to do. And I don't know, it was nice to go through in a rainstorm and see no water pouring uh into the building, that's like, no.
They've been very good around us, I mean, we're a public school system. Um, there's been a lot of people, at one point, there were um seventeen um people on the roof, we really should have taken pictures, it was pretty interesting. Um, but you know, they they came to do the work, and they really did seem to be very efficient. I I think from everything I know, we would definitely seek them out as somebody to put bids in for work, because they really were very good to work with.
Very impressed, and on the Thursday, they said they would be here, they're already. I got all this stuff, I hear, but.
Yeah, it's it's impressive.
And professional, they were very, everything was perfect, very professional.
Yeah.
They're coming back to take drone, they have a professional drone photographer, and they like to use this on their website. They love the color of the shingles I chose, they said it brought out the brick and the tin, which it did, and it actually wasn't even my first choice in color, but the first choice wasn't available, and it looks fantastic, so we asked if a drone photographer could come and take pictures so they could put it on the website.
So we'll have the gymnasium and advertisements, and we'll have good advertisements, yay.
So.
I think you'll have another opportunity this weekend to check to see.
Yes, that's right, I see.
Kevin Gregory, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of the following policies, GBM employee references and GCFA employee social media privacy.
Second.
Any, any uh con or discussions here? You want? You know, if.
Aye.
No. Kevin Gregory, aye?
Aye, yep.
Declaration of revised policies?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of the following revised policies. Uh, GBN family and medical leave, GBO family care leave, GCF professional staff hiring, following selection, name selection of teaching personnel, JJIF management of concussion and other head injuries, JSCK dash R rules for student use of privately owned electronic devices at school. Didn't mean to jump in on.
No, you're right, absolutely.
Just you and I.
No, I know. You're completely fine.
You had that typed in here.
No worries.
Discussion? None, okay, Kevin Gregory, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. You see if the board will approve moving the July first school board meeting to July fifteen?
Motion to approve changing July first, twenty twenty five school board meeting to July fifteen, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Kevin Gregory?
Aye.
Thank you. See if the board will transfer between budget process for two thousand twenty three, twenty four. That we're motion.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that for the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four, the school board delegates to the superintendent its authority under twenty dash AM RSA uh fourteen eighty five parentheses four to transfer amounts not exceeding five percent of the total appropriation for any cost center from any cost center to another cost center or among other cost, other costs in in her discretion.
Second. This is language uh provided to us from Drummond Woodsam um following um part as part of the audit process. Um, there's um, this is the five percent law that we've been talking about um for uh movement between cost centers, and they just, they gave us this language and said that this is the time of year that we pull this up.
All right, have a vote. Kevin Gregory, oh, I'm sorry, is there more?
Aye.
Aye, all right. To see the vote, the the board will vote to transfer between budget cost centers for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five? Emotion?
Motion is further authorize that for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, school board delegates, the superintendent this authority under twenty dash A M R S A subsection fourteen eighty five for to transfer amounts not exceeding five percent of the total appropriation for any cost center under for any class center from any cost center to another cost center or among other costs in discretion, physically, I said, well, I just can't do this.
Hopefully possible.
Yeah, costs.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, Kevin Gregory?
Aye.
Superintendent two four.
Okay, I don't really have extra things tonight, so I'd just like to make sure that Louis, you're all set with everything um with the roof, I didn't mean to like.
Everything with the roof's good, all right, we got a good inspection on our elevators for the first time in years.
Oh, it is.
So that saves me a ton of paperwork and repair costs, and the boilers got inspected last week, and that was all very good, that's been a, there's a challenge as well. We changed companies, so those things are all very good.
Check.
Yeah, yeah, we just got to go place thing in the paperwork now, but.
Good.
It will go on a sleep.
Nice. And Mia, um, anything that you'd like to add, like uh comments about the kids' presentation, the work that you've done with them?
Sure. So it's uh it's never really any fun to, you know, have not great reports, but it's always nice to know where you need to grow. Um, so they are very helpful in pointing out exactly where we need.
From the perspective of an eighth grader.
From their perspective, um I've had a great time getting to know that class a little bit more, we've met three times. Um, a valuable lesson is to try to get them to tell me what they actually want. Um, so in order to go out and move into this world and have your needs met, you actually have to be able to tell people what you want. Um, what needs to be different, um using specific language, so really trying to get to a final goal, because we achieve the same goal, we both want, well, both, all of us want school lunch to be better for all of our students. Um, so that's been really great. I don't think many people working outside of school nutrition know all of the regulations and certain limitations that puts on us, you know, there are big resigned things that we want salt.
Right.
But I can't unfortunately get them any salt packets or put additional salt in their food, and we have to um really cook for the masses and not the individual, so where, you know, you've got a quarter of the student body doesn't like meatloaf, but you've got three quarters that love it. But the ones that do not want to eat meatloaf, never want to see it on the menu, never. They're ready to strike the balance between, you know, the all time favorites and populars in moving away from some of those like um the pre made stuffed crust pizza, which, you know, it's not really great nutritionally, but they love it, it's their favorite. I can take chemicals in it, but I would prefer not to give them that and to um, you know, make them something a little more nutritious. Um, so that's really all I have for that, we've been working for the last three years to make improvements, a lot of it is behind the scenes, and I'm excited to move next year, really working more closely with the student body.
I think it sounds like quite a learning opportunity, and I I know that it's your your program and you're very proud of it, as are we, by the way, and the staff that you have um helped to grow in their skill sets, I I mean, you really um made a cohesive group, and we do appreciate that. Um, but I can see just by a couple of the things they said and the things that they were referring to, like they didn't know the nutrition um requirements, you know, um sodium and sugar and dyes, and you know, there's um your um plate, what, I care, my plate, my plate. You know, like, there's a lot of those things which they had to gather some information on, so um it is, it is good to share that. And you start very well by, once you identify something that you need, like as they go into the world, this is a good process for them to learn how, so yeah. So thank you for working with um.
I'm good, thank you. Continue to do something.
Give me it.
Awesome. And Casey, do you have some financial information to share?
Really quick, um good news is we got a hundred fifty thousand extra in our June subsidy, because we are high cost our district um receiving, which is good, good for us. Um, our budget, we have remaining one million four eighty two thousand so far, and I will need roughly about nine hundred thousand of that to roll over in for food salaries for next year, so we're looking pretty decent. We still one more paper to go and one more salary to go. We're looking okay, and that's moving about it.
Mr. Gregory, did you hear that she said um that we received extra money for high costs on a district?
Yes.
Yay. Thank you, Rhonda, you're welcome.
All right, are you then?
Yes.
All right, upcoming upcoming meetings, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, August twelfth, two thousand twenty five, September ninth, two thousand twenty five, October seventh, two thousand twenty five, December fourth, two thousand twenty five, and December second, two thousand twenty five. And can I have a motion to our chairman?
Take a motion, you're there.
Does it second? Kevin?
Make a motion, second. Can you explain why we were varying so much that we that we have an honor's banquet? That we we want to go to to show our respect and appreciation to some of the students.
Yes, absolutely.
Let people know that.
Yes, so we are um headed to the Elks Club to honor this year's graduating class um who will be um receiving their honor stalls for um making honors um in their high school career. So there'll be a meal and some uh kind and celebratory words said, and um so we are trying to be very efficient tonight, and that's why we haven't cut some of the report short. Chelsea, thank you very much for joining us today.
Can I have a vote on the internment?
Yes, I second you.
Kevin Gregory?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.